Hulu, Netflix, Peacock, Amazon Prime, Disney Plus. Streaming media services change not only people's viewing habits, but also change the dynamics facing WCTV. Content is tailored to specific viewer interests, which, for the viewer, is a good thing. It allows people to cut the cord and eliminate programming they neither watch or need. An unforeseen consequence is that it impacts WCTV in a very challenging and costly way.
WCTV is funded almost entirely by a percentage of cable company's revenues based off the amount of cable subscribers we have in Wilmington. In short, less cable subscribers equals less revenue for WCTV. If you utilize any of WCTV's resources by creating your own program or watching local meetings and sports online and you are not a cable subscriber, there is a way to help. I hope you will consider making a donation so that we can continue delivering these programs and more to you. For those of you who have made a donation, I thank you. We do receive these and we are very appreciative.
August 25th, 2021 School Committee Meeting. Tracy, everyone is here with the exception of MJ Burns. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Our first item of business is public comment. Mr. Ragsdale, you have the list?
I do.
All right.
Before we begin the public comment section, I just want to briefly remind people that as a public body, the school committee welcomes the public in attendance at its meetings and welcomes the perspectives of the community through submitting written comments or if you're appearing in person, making a public comment at the meeting. Outside of the public comment session, we ask that the audience be silent and not disrupt the proceedings of the meeting once the public comment section has completed. Please limit your remarks to three minutes and please state your name and address for the record when you come forward to make your comment. So first up, we have Sarah Sheehan. Robert Holmes. Phil Dubai. Rana Boudreau. Melissa Hall. Scott Neville.
Scott Neville, 215 Chestnut Street. First, I want to thank everyone in the committee. The last two years have been impossible and the town owes you debt of gratitude for helping guide us through what we've done. So thank you very much to all of you. I know the DESI meeting yesterday took most of the masking decisions out of your hands. But when I watched the meeting, there were two things that I felt weren't really discussed and I wanted to mention them here in case, you know, there's future discussion. The first thing, I fully understand your desire to want to reward vaccinated individuals. It makes sense, but my question is, how will that be enforced? That wasn't really discussed too much and is it the teachers who are going to be in charge of that? I just envision that teachers who already have more than enough to handle right now having to know the vaccination status of every kid walking down the hallway and a big part of their job becoming telling kids, please put your mask back on. You have to wear it. You don't. You do. Like, please. And it's a lot to ask the teachers to do. The second thing, which Ms. Burns briefly touched upon, was peer pressure and bullying. I think we all remember middle school, high school, no matter, you know, we can try to eliminate those things, but they're still there. They're always going to exist. You can't completely control them. And this will lead to unvaccinating kids being pressured to not wear a mask. It's inevitable. It's going to happen. It puts them at a health risk and the easiest way to solve that is to just force everyone, everyone has to wear them. It's too much of a, it makes it too much pressure on a 12-year-old for, you know, to have their friends saying, oh, we don't have to wear, we don't have to wear, but you do. And, you know, it's going to be an awful lot for a 12-year-old to handle. We can easily solve that with one vote. Finally, I just want to say, you know, we are still in the middle of a healthcare crisis. Please listen to the healthcare professionals and what their advice is. Thank you.
Jeffrey Cohen.
Jeffrey Cohen. Let me pull this up a little bit. 18 Cobalt Street in Wilmington. The Wilmington School Board has chosen to continue mask mandates, completely ignoring the plethora of scientific studies and a direct violation of parental rights. The school committee is attempting to usurp parental authority by mandating masks when they have no legal authority to do so. You do not have our consent to force mask usage. You do not have our consent to interfere with educating our children. You do not have our consent to punish our children using mask mandates. You do not have our consent to introduce pathogens into our children by forced use of facial Petri dishes. This is a culture of a Petri dish from a mask. In addition, you do not have our consent for forced vaccinations as was recommended by the Mask Teachers Association. I believe this to be a violation of the Nuremberg Code for which the penalties are severe. Those who have been vaccinated are part of the largest human medical experiment in world history. Did you know the original control group of 45,000 participants in the trials was completely compromised? The participants who received the placebo were all offered the actual vaccine six months into the trial, thereby ending the trial. Those vaccinated are the experimental trial. Our consent begins and ends with the unbiased, factual, and patriotic education you are required to implement. The physical and psychological damage you are inflicting upon students is reprehensible. We know that long-term mask usage causes dangerous levels of CO2 in children. We know that huge colonies of pathogens seen in this picture have been cultured in the masks of children. The inside and outside of these masks are pathogen Petri dishes. Who should be held accountable for introducing these pathogens and inflicting massive psychological damage to our children? Also, you are directly responsible for removing the critical educational component, the ability to see and interpret facial expressions. How exactly do you expect children to learn social and speaking skills without the ability to observe faces? The answer is they won't. This impact must not be understated. I would be reticent if I didn't bring up the racist curriculum being taught to all students. It is being heavily promoted by the largest teachers' union, the NEA, and sadly, the current occupant of the White House and the administration. This twisted curriculum being taught in Wilmington School schools uses innocuous terms like diversity, inclusion, and equity when they are far from it. The current curriculum is designed to further divide this great nation based on skin color because of fictitious premise that America is a racist nation, which could not be further from the truth. Just one example is an audit of books in our school system that found that only, quote-unquote, "only," end quote, 33% were racially diverse. Individuals in this room wasted a $40,000 donation to purchase 2,500 more books on diverse subjects. How many should we have? 100%? Why aren't you using reasonable guidelines that represent the demographics in Wilmington? Like, for instance, we're 85% white. I'm not saying there should be 85%, but maybe 15% to 20% diverse books. There's also mounting evidence as to the scope, excuse me, there was also mounting evidence as to the scope of this cancer throughout our schools. This reverse discrimination must end. Let's face it, mask mandates have absolutely nothing to do with science. They're about control. In addition, we demand that you provide an unbiased education to our children. If you are unable or unwilling to do so, then perhaps you need to find another occupation. Thank you.
Angela Zakowskaya.
I'm not going to talk about the masks because I did so last time, but I do want to talk about PCR testing that you might be considering. According to Dr. Mullis, who invented the PCR test says, and I quote, "PCR test cannot and should never be used in the diagnosis of infectious diseases and viruses." PCR test amplifies genetic material. It's only looking for partial virus sequences. So identifying a single pathogen is next to impossible. The idea that the PCR kits can isolate a specific virus like COVID-19 is nonsense, end quote. Also, according to David Crowe, a Canadian researcher with a degree in biology and mathematics, clearly explained problems with the PCR-based Corona testing, and I quote, "The first thing to know is the test is non-binary. In fact, I don't think there are any tests for infectious diseases that are positive or negative." According to Mullis, PCR is not for medical diagnosis, and he said that himself, end quote. I will tell every parent in here and those that are listening, do not let your children wear masks. Until school committee members provide us scientific data that masks do not harm our children, you have absolutely no authority to tell parents what to do with their kids. If you plan on a mask mandate, we demand you provide an oximeter to each child to measure their oxygen level. Also, make sure that their biohazard waste disposal, since we all have death breath. Shout out to all the schools that are not mandating masks.
Next is Stephen Biggins.
Good afternoon. I was going to come up and speak mainly about masks, but it seems as if the board already has their mind made up. You have your own feelings about the mask mandates. We have our own feelings. There's two different stats out there as doctors. A lot of the stuff that we put out, we get fact-checked and say that our data is incorrect, but your data is correct. There's doctors that are being censored that have been the inventor of the PCR test, completely censored. Our voices, we're talking and it's like you guys just don't want to hear us at all. It's just, you've already decided what you want to do and that's the bottom line. He ended up hiring Jeff Riley, who holds, now he is the one who decided mask mandates for all of Massachusetts. He holds a bachelor's degree in philosophy. He has a master's in counseling and he has a master's degree in school administration. He has no medical background whatsoever. Who is he to be deciding what's best for our kids? That's, I mean, and as far as the vaccines go, there are other cures out there, natural cures. Hydroxychloroquine, ivermectin, Regeneron. It's not, the FDA apparently just yesterday approved these vaccines, apparently. They did not. I know. I saw that myself. And you're so ready to give them to these kids, not even knowing what the long-term effects are going to be. It hasn't even been a year over, it's been a little over a year since the first one. And you're all, everyone wants to just jab the kids with the needle. They don't care. They just, I don't know if it's because you get paid for each shot that the kids are going to take because I know every time a kid gets a clinical diagnosis or is referred to a doctor's office, the school gets money through the state and through the federal government. So where are our wits' end? We're sitting here, we're talking, and we just feel like we're being ignored. I don't have much more to say other than that, but except for Jeffrey Riley, he has no right to make these decisions for us when he obviously does not have the credentials and does not even hold any healthcare, anything in healthcare. I mean, he wasn't even a school nurse for crying out loud. But he's making the decisions for our kids, you know, kindergarten all the way to 12, for mask mandates. It's crazy. It's complete. It doesn't make sense. And parents are just fed up. We're fed up. That's all I have to say.
I understand that Pat Nally is not here, so I'm going to move to Kim Stevenson. Seeing that, Bob Consorti. All right, I saw some people who came in after we began, so I'm going to circle around to the first names on the list one more time to see if anyone has come. Sarah Sheehan. Robert Holmes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Obviously, mask mandate wasn't on the agenda, but I'll still keep this short and sweet about it all. As an essential employee for both Costco and FedEx, masks did not help me from not getting COVID-19. I don't see how it's going to protect our children at all as well. You're forcing young kids to wear masks, which is totally unfair to them. They are, without a doubt, the strongest group we have that can get infected. My kids had it as well after I got it and they were fine. They did very well. In fact, they got better than and quicker than I did. I think forcing kids to wear masks is child abuse and is unfair. And along with your critical race theory, or as you've been calling it, education equity, just a name and disguise, I believe that that is wrong too. What we're teaching our kids is, basically in short, how to segregate with the having vaccines and masks and not having vaccines and masks by having vaccine passports for the children, which has been talked about. You're basically treating them like it's not. I see Germany all over again with the Jews. With CRT, you're teaching them that their skin color matters, whether they're white or black, which is wrong. As FDA once said, "Those who forget the past are doomed to repeat it." And I feel that as a group, we are heading down that line. As a school committee, we hope that you will have a common sense to see past what everyone wants in the world and make a common choice that is good for everybody instead of what is the right thing they think is the right. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Phil Dubai. Rana Boudreau. Melissa Hall. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Please, please come forward.
How are we doing tonight? Thank you, everyone. I'm not going to talk about masks. Oh, I'm joined, Tilly, from 5 Tacoma Drive, Wilmington. And I have another subject I'd like to put up, I put in my comments. It's about backpacks at the middle school. If the board could look into this. They're not going to have lockers this year. Our middle school students aren't going to have lockers. At least, can you at least tell me what the weight limit is so I can weigh my son's bag every morning? Because what he carried around last year and was asking for a chiropractor was ridiculous. And any middle school parent will tell you the same thing. I don't know if any of you work in the middle school, but that was ridiculous. But it was COVID. Have to suck it up and do it. But this year, for non-COVID reasons, I have the email if you want. I talked to Dr. Quirk, is the principal. Dr. Quirk, she sent back. You can at least discuss it about what the weight limit is for these kids. It was ridiculous. Thank you very much. That's all I wanted to bring up. Thank you so much.
And then someone else who wanted to, please move forward. Can you give, state your name and address, please?
Sorry?
Can you state your name and address, please, before you make your comment?
Holly Reynolds, One Swayne Road. I just want to let you guys know that there's a lot of people that are having medical issues with the masks and they're still wearing them anyways. And then they're having detrimental effects from them. I personally have, I look fine, but I have severe internal spinal cord issues. My brain's coming out of my skull. People are already judging me before all of this. And there are young kids that are going to be going through the same thing. And it takes a huge turmoil on me as an adult, let alone these children. I struggle to breathe. I get harassed in market baskets just trying to feed myself like everyone else. This should be a choice for the parents, between them, their children, their doctors. The school being involved, I understand everyone's concerns. I do. But it needs, people need to step out of their own little world and see what's actually happening internally with people. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments that anyone would like to make? All right, seeing them.
Just to note, there are multiple comments in our packets as well that were submitted in writing. We have items for approval, approval of minutes, July 28th and August 16th, 2021. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mrs. Plowman. All in favor? Almost unanimous. Abstain? From, do you want to do them separately?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Because I, I'll vote to approve the 28th, but I'll abstain on the 16th.
You'll vote to approve, all right, so everyone in favor of approving July 28th? That is unanimous. Everyone in favor of approving August 16th? And that's one abstention. Thank you, Jay. We are going to pass over the acceptance of the student handbook at the Wilmington Middle School so we can have a bit of discussion. We'll do that right at the beginning of the superintendent's report. We have some warrants, G01, G02, R01, is this right? Sorry, these are coming in. Yeah, okay.
I'm in.
Yeah, sorry. R01, L01, O2, O3, O4, FS01, O2, O3, O4, O5, O6, O7, O8, O9, 10, CF01, 02, 03, 06, 07, and 08. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Samaha, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That's unanimous. We have payroll ending 8/4, 2021, 8/18, 2021. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That's unanimous. All right, our next item of business is superintendent's report. Dr. Brand, we'll begin with, will we begin with the handbook?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. As Chair Bryson said, we're going to move the middle school handbook to this section for further discussion, but also to bring light to the fact that there's been one adjustment that Dr. Quirk and her staff has made. And Dr. Quirk is here this evening, so I'd ask if she could kindly come up. I'm aware, we are aware, that there have been a number of questions as of late regarding backpacks. And so primarily, unless there are other questions that members of the committee have for Dr. Quirk and the contents of the backpack, I think really she's here this evening to try and bring context to that. So, Dr. Quirk.
Good evening. Hi, how are you? Thank you for having me here today. You know, the decision for backpacks was not lightly. It was in conjunction with my team and the staff. You know, last year, as much as it was that we didn't use the lockers, we noticed that it provided some bonuses, right, that we were hoping to try to go forward with, right? As well as, you know, in the past, there were issues with students with Chromebooks with not having the backpack, with it getting damaged, as well as trying to cut down on the supplies when working with the teachers to, you know, make sure that the students aren't carrying as much. I know that there, I've seen teachers even today working on ways in which they can have classroom supplies and that not as much of, they're carrying around as much. You know, the thought was that we would be giving them lockers around October 15th to have a place for their coats, so that way that is taken care of. Typically, you know, questions I've gotten were, my son is going to ride his bicycle and where am I supposed to put his helmet? And we've, you know, talked about things like that, that they're typically kept in, things like that, in Officer Stebbin's office as well. So I think that's where we were at for the most part.
Do you want me to open this up to questions here? Other questions from the committee?
I just have a comment, which is that as a middle school parent myself, that I received, and as other parents did, an email from you on Monday with a link to a survey. And I would encourage middle school parents who want to share their thoughts to fill out that survey, Google Form survey, and to look for Dr. Quirk's email from Monday afternoon to get the link for that, to share your thoughts if you have them.
I did, you know, look at the data that I've gotten from it so far. You know, it's, you know, and looking at it where, you know, parents filled it out maybe once for three children, yet other parents filled it out for every single child. So I'm trying to make sure that I have the appropriate representation in the data. You know, and it is where there are parents, more parents, 55% right now of what I'm looking at, that said that they wanted to have lockers. 45% were either no or they were okay with either situation. You know, I do have to say, it did come to a little bit of a surprise for me because I did, the last two weeks, have both a scavenger hunt for the sixth grade parents as well as private, two days of private tours. And even with the scavenger hunt, had the opportunity to speak with parents. And parents hadn't said anything to me. In fact, you know, tour guides, the previous week had said that parents had commented that they were kind of happy that we weren't having lockers. So, you know, with anything that I think that I've done, you know, even when you look back at lunch last year, right, I will always be revisiting every topic. But I did find, you know, last year, it was something that we thought was going to be a bonus as we move into more technology age, or, you know, here I am with my electronic tablet and the kids have Chromebooks and we're moving to more online books. That was the thought. That is the thought. Yes, Mrs. Plowman?
Mrs. Plowman.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I apologize.
Sorry.
Sorry, always the teacher. I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming in tonight and speaking to us and to the community about it. Can you help us understand when you say like the bonuses that teachers were noticing last year outside of like supplies and the two points that you make in the letter to parents? What were some of those other benefits?
There was less disruption of kids needing to go to their locker because of not having materials. And, oh, I forgot something at my locker, so they had to go back. You know, only a certain number of classes would be near where the locker is. So other classes, it would be longer times of them out of the classroom. The kids were, and thus were more prepared because they had everything with them. Do we have to work with students to manage what they have in their backpacks? Absolutely, just like we have to manage, help them manage what they have in their locker, you know? We had minimal discipline, we had no discipline issues when it came to anything at the lockers. You know what I mean? Teachers are out there in the hallways doing their job. Please don't get me wrong, right? But when you have 80 to 100 students going into their lockers, you know, things can happen. And we had no issues with that. You know, it's trying to give them more time in the classroom and with their teachers. Was one of the major reasons why we wanted to try this. As well as the, you know, trying to cut down on supplies and getting it more streamlined, which I know is an ultimate goal and an issue that in the six years of me being there has always been an issue with supplies.
Mr. Samaha.
I have a very similar question, but I think, I think I'll follow it up to with the, like, a typical sixth, seventh, or eighth grader, like, how much stuff are they carrying around? I mean, how much would be, they'd be expected to carry around? I mean, it might, it might vary by which house they're in or which teacher they have, but...
And we are trying to work on that, to streamline that, much like the North and the West would want to streamline their supplies, right, across the town. You know, a lot of our textbooks are either online or moving to that point. Because of COVID, last year, a lot of the materials that teachers will be using are in their Google classrooms, you know, and online. But, you know, with following... But, you know, with following universal design, you know, some kids might need a book and some kids might not. And, you know, we'll be working with that. Just like some more, some kids might need a locker all the time and some kids won't. But there were a lot of pluses with not having one, and we thought we would try it. But again, I will, like everything else, continue to monitor it and look at it.
Any other questions or comments? This is not, so again, Mr. Biggins, this is the meeting of the school committee. We have the public comment. This is, these are your volunteers. These are your volunteers who are doing the business of the school committee. You are able to sit here and watch us do that business, just like you would the selectmen, but this is not a public forum for you to participate back and forth with us. However, Dr. Quirk, I have actually, as a middle school parent, written to Dr. Quirk with questions about this very policy, this very piece of the handbook, separate from my role as a school committee member, and had received responses to that. I know that the Google form is up, so if we do have questions and concerns, there are many ways that we can contact the administration. This right now is not your opportunity to ask Dr. Quirk questions. This is not a school committee policy. We are approving the handbook, but the locker is actually not something that we decide. This is a school-based decision, so they have made this decision. We, as parents, may not like it. We, as school committee members, may want to push back on that a little bit. But I can, I can assure you that Dr. Quirk is doing a tremendous amount of work to make sure, that she's making sure that she's addressing all these concerns. For example, many of us who had middle school children did have backpacks that were quite heavy last year. We can attest to that. We know that. Dr. Quirk is aware of that. And so has said, okay, if they need a book, I assume something like it will remain in the classroom. If they need a book, because they have an accommodation, it will remain in the locker and they will be able to get it before the class. And we will be making those sorts of accommodations. I'm going to actually move this conversation on. Any more questions from the committee about this? Yep, Mrs. Newhouse.
Not regarding backpacks. I just had one, I just noticed a clerical on page 15.
I apologize.
Did you see that, where Julie Kim's email address is under Shannon and Keely?
I will fix that.
That was, yeah, that was my only comment. Other than that, I.
Please know that there are some things in this handbook due to hiring and things that will be changing, that's.
But I thought the layout of the handbook was much easier to read as a parent, and it flowed much nicer. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Yep, Mr. X.
I move to approve Wilmington Middle School handbook.
Is there a second? Mrs. Plowman, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Dr. Brand?
Thank you, Dr. Quirk.
Thank you, Dr. Quirk.
Ms. Sinkerstolz, do you have the controls?
Well, you have them coming. There are more controls right up there.
It's front of me.
Thank you, thank you very much. And again, good evening, everyone. The presentation I have tonight corresponds with the first item under the superintendent's report, and that's school reopening updates. It was not originally in the packet, simply because it represents the work that's going on this very hour up to this point in time. It will be available and publicly available tomorrow. And I'll make sure that the community as a whole receives a copy of that. Just shortly earlier, this afternoon, staff received a copy of that. My intention with this item tonight is to provide you with a little bit more information, and our community with more information as it relates to our plans for the opening of school. This continues to be rather fluid, as I think most are aware. Lots of developments relative to guidance and things that we are planning are opening around. And ultimately, the intention of this presentation is really geared for really a couple of audiences. One, our families and our students, of course, and two, our staff, as both obviously prepare to return to school in really not that long of a period of time, which we are gearing up for and are, I know the excitement is building for our staff, and we'll look forward to welcoming all back, them all back officially next Monday. I do think it's worth pointing out, though, that there are elements that are associated with the reopening or the opening of school, I'm sorry, the opening of school, that do fall into the realm of mandatory subjects of bargaining. This holds true not just for Wilmington, but I would suggest to you, again, all school districts, and there will be work underway with the respective unions or associations to establish terms of those MOAs or memorandums agreement, which of course are between two parties, one, the local association, as well as the local school committee. Work has begun on that, and I'm pleased to be able to share that we've had very positive and productive conversations earlier this week. Those will continue. But the items that are highlighted in here are terms that we've talked through and feel good about, and so they're captured here. But I also think, just to repeat the fluidity of this, the changes that are underway, it is different than last school year, I would suggest to you, in that while there was an awful lot of work to get ready for the opening of school, there was a clear and more coherent picture weeks in advance of school opening, and unfortunately, that's not quite the case. And so it's making it for, it to be just a little bit more challenging. These are the items that I'll touch upon very briefly tonight that are, that are captured in the presentation. And again, just to underscore the conversation I had with the WTA and our school leadership team over the span of the last two days. What topics or areas are felt to be most important to give our families, our students, and our staff a clear picture of what our plan is right now upon school opening next week? And so we believe that this captures, that this captures and addresses the key things. First off, testing program. As I'm sure some are aware, many are aware, the Department of Education is strongly recommending to school districts consideration of testing programs for COVID-19. They have recommended three different programs. Certainly won't get into the details of all of those right now. For members of the community who might be interested, certainly lots of information available regarding those testing programs through the Department of Education website. But what I do want to share with the community tonight is after conversation with Ms. Crowe, as well as consultation with Dr. Curdo, as you know, our school physician, the recommendation that has emerged is that we, as a district, pursue the test and stay program. That is the term that's being used, not our term, but the term for the program. And we have, as a school district, applied for that program. And so there certainly is a lot more information to come. I don't have any more information about what this exactly means tonight for you, the logistics associated with it. There's a number of different elements to definitely unpack, if you will, consider and figure out how it's going to work. It is my absolute hope that we will have, you know, much further communication for the community before school opens. But there's work that has to certainly be attended to this area. But I know there's interest in what is it, if anything, that we're planning to pursue. Masking face covering, obviously a key piece as, in terms of this reopening or opening of school. So I think as everyone is aware, right now, we sit at a different place than we did at a short time ago. The Department of Education, or DESI, has put forth a mandate, the commissioner, that all students and staff, regardless of vaccination status, are required to wear masks and face coverings well indoors through at least until October the 1st. Again, relative to the exact same place that we were last school year, there still are exemptions for, for students who may have medical or other needs. And there is information that we will, again, share with our families and making sure that they're aware of how to pursue those and how to go about seeking those. Just as was the case last year, we will provide masks for staff and students if needed. I think in the end, we didn't supply or have to supply many, most, I believe. Most of our staff and most of our students supplied their own, but I do want to point that out. I also want to point out the fact that there is absolutely, as we sit here right now, no recommendations, certainly that we've seen for outdoor, when outdoors, for face coverings or masking. And that includes recess, so I think that that's important to point out. That includes athletics and the like. It is a federal mandate, and just to underscore that, it is a federal mandate that masks and face coverings have to be worn on school buses at all times. So regardless of the direction that individual districts, ours included, might proceed in after the DESI mandate is altered or changed, unless or until the federal mandate is repealed, I suppose would be the right way to put that. Members of our community should expect that if their children are riding a school bus, it is a federal mandate in which they have to wear that mask. There are no options for that. Mask breaks, like we did last year, will be provided. All visitors and volunteers in school, whether during the school day or after the school day, hours on weekends, are required to wear a mask. I want to underscore this, although it's not in the slide, and I should have, in hindsight, put this in here. I want to be clear, this is not my recommendation alone. This comes from the respective recommendations of Dr. Curdo, Ms. Crowe, and respectively, our Wilmington Board of Health. And those are the individuals in which I've relied upon to make that recommendation here. During snack and lunch, students will be expected to wear a mask when not actively eating. And something I'll expand upon a little bit more in a moment. Ventilation, this is, there's nothing new with this, but just again, knowing that when people are thinking about COVID-19 and the concerns, ventilation is a topical area, if you will, that comes to mind, and understandably so. We, we did, I'll say install, they're portable, but we installed air purifiers in all of our classrooms last year and all of our workspaces and such. They were running 24 hours, seven days a week last year, and they will continue to do so. They meet the code or the standard, if you will, in terms of the air exchanges per hour. And so we're in a very good place with that, and much thanks to Mr. Regirio and George Hooper and his crew who helped in that process. It was a large endeavor. I forget how many units in total, but hundreds. Windows, again, continue, from all accounts and everything that we're reading, continue to be something that's important to have fresh air where possible. And so that certainly doesn't change, nor does the ability for window air conditioning or central air conditioning in this building and fans to continue to be used, underscoring the importance of fans. Simply put, the plan is to continue school operations in the fall as we left off in the spring. And so cleaning and disinfecting will continue. Our custodial crews have been terrific under the direction of Mr. Hooper. They did a great job last year, and we know that they'll do, they'll do the job that we knew them to do this year. I think it is important, though, to point out that second bullet. And that is that there's no longer a requirement to wipe or to clean surfaces between equipment. You may recall, last school year, we really, we really had to remove shared items, manipulatives, even the cleaning of keyboards if they were shared and so on. And that has, that has apparently been removed as a requirement. And so I do, I do, I will point that out. But what hasn't changed is hand washing and sanitizing continue to be very strongly encouraged. Physical distancing, another key piece is, I know everyone is certainly reminiscent of, and I will point out that as of this moment in time, there are no physical distancing requirements in place this year that have been established by the Department of Education. However, with that said, schools are still, as you can see, encouraged to distance to the greatest extent when feasible. I will also say and add to that, that there, the only metric that we have seen in which DESI has made clear, and maybe it's not DESI, maybe it's DPH, to be fair, I'm not certain, is around testing and stay. And when you, the understanding at a 20,000-foot view, again, because as I've said, there's more that we have to understand and glean about that program, is that if you are participating in the testing and stay program, there does need to be three feet distance minimally between students when eating. So that's something that we, we've shaped this plan around, again, with the, with the assumption that we're going to be moving in that direction. We're going to strive to maximize physical distance in our classrooms and learning environments to the greatest extent possible. And what we are trying to balance here, quite honestly, is as much as possible a return to a normal classroom configuration. Last year, we had common spaces, particularly at the elementary levels, those reading corners and class gatherings or reading circles or such, they were, they were not existent. They were not existent because of the confines of the space and the need for the physical distancing that we were shaping around six feet originally, and then that, as you might recall, shrunk. We are trying our very best, and we had this conversation yesterday with the WTA and recognition that everybody wants to get back to as great a sense of sort of normal classroom and learning activity as possible, well balancing the need and the recommendations where possible to maximize that physical distance. And so that is why there's not a specific number of square feet or feet that's listed there. And we are going to do our best to try and balance that. Obviously, masking as a complement to that is a key piece, and I think, you know, it needs to be stated. As I mentioned a moment ago, relative to the test and stay program, that is why we've, we have embraced this plan or shaped this plan around striving for three feet physical distance to the extent possible during lunch. And that's, that's the context for that three feet. And one of the things that, just to point out, and we'll continue to try and do this, especially for situations, and hopefully there are a few, for when there's positive and symptomatic situations, the idea of trying to group kids together, keep them together for lunches, and that's easier at the elementary level than the secondary due to the nature of the schedules. But that's a key piece in the context tracing, which has not gone anywhere. And we will be including in further correspondence with families in our community as a reminder. That does, that's not gone away. But we also need to understand how that works with vaccinations, and then eventually when the test and stay piece comes into play. So there's a lot of, for lack of a better word, moving parts on that. School environments, just seems to be the most appropriate term, but there's a, it's a bit of a potpourri of items that are in here. But again, trying to give some sense of what it is that school will look like. I think this is really great as we think about our return back to lots of things that we had in place before. Clubs, activities, and electives will all resume and can all resume. There are no restrictions on indoor activities. And so we will move to return to in-person events, clubs, and so on. Schools are, as you can see, you know, continue the encouragement, the line of encouragement by the Department of Education and other agencies, is where you can maintain distance, do so. Where you can utilize outdoor space, do so. And so that, I know many teachers did last year, and I'm sure in the, in the good weather, that will also be an effort. Materials and supplies and equipment, I sort of touched upon this a moment ago, that they can be shared between students. There's no requirement for washing or sanitizing, and again, the hygiene piece. Other things that sort of fall under this broad umbrella, just, I think, again, important to point out in terms of, some are still wondering about what remote learning is, looks like. Is there an option? There's, there's not right now, from DESI's standpoint, around structured learning time. Field trips, excursions can be planned accordingly, and we can return to that as long as, of course, the health and safety guidelines are followed. Recession procedures will return to how it was before the pandemic. And that is to say, all playground equipment can be used, masks are not needed outside, and equipment can be shared. The effort will be to still keep water bubbleers or water fountains closed off. That's just thought to be most appropriate. However, we will continue to make sure that water is available, as was the case in the last, last school year. There are no health restrictions on locker usage. Obviously, I know some are perhaps jumping to the belief that that's maybe behind the middle school. It's not. But then there are no locker restrictions, and I'll just, I'll just point that out. Meetings and gatherings will resume in person. And, and right now, to my knowledge, there are no indoor capacity restrictions. That said, again, we're going to try and maximize physical distance where we can. I know this is a theme, but it's certainly everywhere in the guidance. Definitely want to point out, though, to the community and to, you know, staff, that there still may be remote or virtual gatherings because it's believed to not take away from that experience, but in fact, maybe enhances it or expands accessibility. And I think I mentioned this, I think I did with this group, things are colliding together, but around the fact that I know our school principals receive, and our staff receives some positive feedback around how some of the virtual, the ability to gather or meet virtually was favorable, was helpful, in fact. So as first off examples, back-to-school nights at the elementary school, schools all across the board will be held in person. The plan right now and the thinking is, given what. The plan right now and the thinking is, given what happens in back-to-school night at the secondary level, where you generally have a group of parents who are flying from one classroom to another to another, and you know, it's, the feedback was favorable that that worked actually quite well last fall, and so the thought is, why not do that? We think it would be actually an enhancement to the experience for, for those ages, age levels. Physical education, athletics, just to point this out, I know that there could be some questions. There's no, again, there's no restrictions, so physical education classes when weather is inclement most certainly can take place indoors, full capacity. At the present time, masking is still required. For interscholastic athletics, I think that the MIAA is meeting tomorrow, I believe. I truly don't know what's on their agenda. MIA, the Massachusetts Association of Athletics. However, the Middlesex League right now has, did come to agreement and collaboration and effort to try and again be very much on the same page. We are a part of the Middlesex League, as I think many are aware. Masks right now are required for all students. We only have two sports. I think that holds true for all schools, as I say that, in the fall, and that's volleyball and cheer indoors. But all sports are running, all sports outdoors, there are no masks required. Spectators are absolutely allowed to return, and so this is all obviously great things. Performing arts, the Department of Education has not put forth, to this point in time, any specific guidance around performing arts. However, the state association has, and they, they, DESI, I guess you could say supports it, or has pointed school districts in, in the direction, and so it's just captured here. There's nothing for outdoor activity, so if performing arts programs are outdoors, it's, it's pretty wide open. There are recommendations that they have made, though, for indoor activity, and they're captured here. In the essence of time, I won't go through them all, but you can see masking, of course, things like bell covers for wind instruments and so on. But the good news is that it's, it's, we're so close to, we're closer to the way things work. So what's next? Just in no particular order, things that, as we sit here right now, we know we have to attend to. I'm confident I've forgotten to list something here, but test and stay, I've mentioned that at the outset. A lot more information that our, our school nurses have to dig into, and I know they will be doing that to help shape and inform what that exactly looks like and how that'll run. We will continue to review health-related protocols, you know, as they continue to be pushed out. I mentioned earlier, collective bargaining. We will continue, of course, to engage with the WTA, the Wilmington Teachers Association, and revisit masking policy at some point with the full anticipation that Department of Education, some point soon, with the full anticipation that Department of Education, if it sticks to that October 1st date, will, will again return to the need for school districts and school committees to establish what their policy looks like. So I know that's an awful lot of information. Again, it's helpful that this is helpful for people to get a sense of what they can expect when their children return, when our staff return to school next week. And with all of that, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from the committee? Mrs. Plowman?
I, I know it's on my mind, and I think it's on the minds of a lot of families. If a student is symptomatic and they have to test, and they have to quarantine until they have a test result, or if they are COVID-positive, what does learning look like for them?
So it, it is, of course, understandably, an important question, and that is something that, right now, we are still in the process of sorting out. There is, as I've said before, no, the Department of Education has been quite clear that remote learning does not count for time-on-learning. That's a drastic change from last school year. Most recently, as in last Friday, I think it was, they pushed out something that did not quite read, quite frankly, the same way as it has up until that point in time. And there's a little bit of a wedge that's opened up to say, well, but if you can, do something remotely. So we have to, we have to still figure that out. That is something that if it, if it, if it's different than the provision of work that normally a teacher would do if their, if a child was ill, and that's, that's what we have to figure out. But the thing is, of course, if a day or two out sick is very different than 10, or whatever the number will be. So it is something that we will continue to be talking about with the WTA and planning floor. So stay tuned. But clearly, that's part of the larger frame around trying to understand the test and stay, which comes into play, as I understand it. And again, I will tell you, it's from a very high level, but, and the advantages of test and stay, and if you are symptomatic versus asymptomatic, and certainly, I think I have this right, my colleagues helped me out, if you are asymptomatic but have come in contact with somebody who's positive, and you're involved in the testing program, test and stay program, you do not have to quarantine. Did I get that right?
Correct.
So something that we clearly need to make sure we're solid on and convey that. Because that's, that's huge, obviously, in terms of keeping our, our children and our staff in school. So again, much more to come, but.
That's helpful, though, at least a little bit of info, so.
If I can just add on to that, that the key aspect of, of, of test and stay is that in order to stay in school, that you take a daily rapid antigen test administered at school, and that as long as it's continually negative and you're asymptomatic, then you can remain in school. And so that's kind of all the, that's the part that has to be actually figured out, as far as the administration of that Binax Now test daily for, and I think it goes for seven days. You don't, you know, have to do it forever, but I think for seven days.
Mrs. Plowman?
And then you can stop.
Do you know, David, or anyone else, so let's say I have a child who's symptomatic, but is part of the test and stay, they test negative, so they could have a head cold. Are they allowed to be in school if they test negative for something like that? They're symptomatic. Can kids come to school if they produce a negative COVID test? Obviously not symptomatic with a fever, because that would be standard protocol in a normal year. But if a kid has a runny nose or a little cough, can they be, and maybe we need Doreen here, or Doreen's.
And clearly, well, I don't want to, you addressed, sorry, you addressed the question. I don't know if David or anyone else knows the answer, but.
I'm, I'm not sure about the detail of that, because the thing that triggers us in the first place is being a close contact. So first of all, someone has to test positive. You have to be identified as a close contact within a certain space for a certain amount of time. And then the other questions come in as far as whether you're symptomatic and that you have the rapid response test. But, but I'm not, I'm not sure what would happen if you were symptomatic, but maybe not with COVID, and then you had a negative test. I'm not sure.
So this program is only for people who have been in contact with a COVID, so this wouldn't be something families could access if their child, we don't know that they've been in contact, but they're symptomatic. They can't access the test and stay?
I don't think that's what its purpose is, but I don't know exactly what the limitations are as far as how much access there might be to it. I'm going to start getting way over my head that I.
I know.
I'm going to shut this down, I think.
Say no more, because what, yeah.
I asked that question of Doreen at one of our meetings within the last month, and her answer to me was that if they tested negative and their symptoms are getting better, then they can return to school. They don't have to be out for the full 10 days.
Eight sixteen.
From eight sixteen.
Yeah, I do remember that.
Well, as we're discovering here, and I'm not trying to make light of it, there is lots of detail that has to be certainly shaped around this, so we can clearly make sure our nurses are on the same page, and, and obviously clear information for our families to understand how this works and, and what the advantages of, of it are and so on, so.
Can I go? Do you mind? I know I usually go last, but it's, it's very connected to this piece of the testing and the quarantine. So just to echo what you said, we need to get this info to families ASAP, not necessarily that.
Right.
This testing program, but at least, what do I do? Like, what if my child wakes up that morning and I'm like, uh-oh, like, what am I supposed to do? So I think we need to have that out. I'm assuming we're still going to use the website, maybe the COVID area, the section that, and just keep uploading documents there for families. Okay. My second, I'm sorry, question or comment, what are we, I had the same question, what are we doing for students in quarantine? And this is not something that I want to sit around and wait for the state to tell, or you should do, I want to sort of be on the front, and I know you're working on that, but I think this is something that's going to need, like, we need to get moving on this very, very quickly, so that if this were to happen within the first two weeks of school, we already have something in the plans, or it's consistent. So what I see happening as a, as an educator, as a parent, is some, maybe one teacher at the high school says, well, actually, it's fine. You can zoom in here. That's fine with me. You're home, it's fine. But then not all teachers are doing that, because that's not what, every teacher would, it's not what we agreed on. So I just want to make sure we come to some sort of a consensus that this is what is going to happen if a child in this grade level, elementary, is in quarantine, middle school, high school, because I feel like it's going to look very different, and that's going to cause a lot of anxiety among families to have one child who's in quarantine, who's getting access, and have another child who's maybe getting packets. So.
We have, yes.
So I know we're moving in that direction, but I want the community to know, we, we feel that, and we feel that too. We feel that pressure. So, so that's my question and my comment. Mr. Smaha?
I was just going to say, you know, sort of taking a look at this in sort of its totality, it's, a lot of this is, is a return to a much more normal school year. And so I'm really, you know, excited, you know, about that prospect of a lot of the restrictions and stuff being lifted. So I'm very, you know, excited about that. The, the test and stay program, and you might not have any idea, is this, is this a free thing, or is there a cost to the district? It's free?
It is. The understanding is that the state and the partnership they have with a, I'm not sure who the agency is, but yeah, the, the understanding is, is that the, the overwhelming costs will be covered. However, we have to still understand if there's anything that's been left out of that, this, this package, and what does that truly look like from any resources or personnel on the ground. So that's, the first phase was to apply to the Department of Education, which, as I shared, we've done, and now comes certainly more information that gets into the weeds or the logistics of it. So overwhelmingly, it sounds like it is free with no cost to the district. However, we have to understand if there's truly no cost and what we, what we have to provide to facilitate our participation.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds like a really, a really good program to keep kids, you know, in school while not having shut down classrooms and all sorts of stuff like that. So.
Mr. Rexton?
Tying out to something Dr. Brad, Dr. Brand mentioned a, a little while ago. I, I think what, what you were referring to as far as what DESI had said about the remote issue, is that while schools can't offer, like, remote as a full-time schooling option, the commissioner did say that in specific circumstances, for example, quarantining students, that if a district can manage to have someone zoom into a classroom, that that would be an acceptable way to handle quarantining students, that, that, that was, you know, considered a different thing from, from offering like a true remote schooling option. That, of course, works even better at the secondary level than the elementary level. But that would be, would be at least a possibility that I think would be kosher with, with DESI. Separately, I want to go back to something that was on one of your slides, saying that as far as snacks and lunch, that students have to wear a mask when not actively eating. And I was wondering if we could unpack that a small amount, because I, I think that in some people's minds, that might conjure up the idea that it's kind of, you know, the moment that you close your mouth and are not actively swallowing, that you have to, you know, throw your mask back on your face.
Thank you for clarifying question.
To, to me, I'm, it sounds like it's just saying that if there's a 20-minute lunch period, that it's not just, therefore, you get to just take off your mask for 20 minutes and put it back on at the end, that, you know, when you really aren't actually eating your lunch, if you finished early, then you should put your mask back on, and you can't just sit there waiting till the end of lunch period.
That is exactly, that is exactly the intent. I'm glad you asked it, and so perhaps we need to reword that, but that's exactly the intent.
Thank you. Mrs. Newhouse?
Just a quick question of clarification, because I know DESI came out, and their mandate was for K through 12 to, for the mask. Are we including our pre-K in that as well?
Thank you. Yes, the intention is to do so. That is within our current policy right now. That's the, your policy that's in place.
Yeah.
And so for this time period, that's the intention, too.
Okay.
I'm sure that's clear.
Thank you.
Mr. Vennett?
So I always, I wanted to ask a question about mask breaks, if I could, and, you know, sort of specifically for either folks who are new to the district, or those families who were in cohort C last year and weren't in school. I don't know if it's different at, you know, building to building or grade to grade, but can you talk about sort of how frequently they are, how, like, what the duration of a mask break is, just so that folks have some sort of sense of what their kids will be, you know, getting for breaks during the school day?
Great question. So we, a couple of things, and colleagues certainly jump in if you, if you, I think have left something out, but we, we did talk about whether or not we should schedule universally or at the same time mask breaks, and we, we did not do that. And we felt that leaving that to the discretion of the teacher at an opportune time or times to do so would be best. I think that it probably is fair to say that it varied at age level, but at the elementary level, it was in line with snack, which was 10 minutes?
Probably a little bit longer.
A little bit longer, 15. Perhaps a little bit shorter at the, at the older grade levels. So clearly, this is something that our, our building principals and our nurses will need to be mindful of in regularly reminding staff that that, that should happen. And, you know, whether it be the grade-level team or, or just the school as a whole in terms of how they'll approach that. But that, that absolutely is still the plan. So that is to say, more than just lunchtime, there will be mask breaks for, for kids. And I think we were striving for two last, if I remember correctly, last year. But we'll, we will certainly include that in messaging.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. That brings us to our current staffing updates.
Sure. So I'll, I'll start this, but Ms. Stern Armstrong, our Director of Human Resources, is here, and so if she could come up, that would be great. We, we thought it important to give you an update. Certainly, the, I know that the committee is, is always interested in how we are situated relative to our staffing, and, and so, thanks to Andrea for, for volunteering to be here. I'll just say, and she'll, I'll just start it off, it has been an incredibly hectic two months since school ended, unlike any other time, unlike last year. And, and I'm sure she'll expand upon this, but by all accounts, this is not a Wilmington-only thing. From all of our points of contact, and my colleagues around this table, in talking to others, there seems to be a universal situation here of staff shortages, sadly. So we, we, we're not trying, with Andrea here tonight, she'll give you an overview and an update, and this is just a real, real-time perspective and update in terms of where we're at. So with that, Andrea.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, good evening, everybody. So you were, just to give you a little update, there was a report that was shared with you, I think, earlier this week, and I can say, which Paul could attest to, I think, at this point, within the last 24 hours, roughly 10 staff were hired. We are moving quickly. Unfortunately, with the same note, there are people that are continuing to resign or retire, which two people did that today, so two staff members. So we're seeing quite a bit of change, but offhand from, and just like Dr. Brand said, the number of staff with the changes, retirements, resignations, transfers, I have not seen this many transfers since I've been here, which are, they're good that the transfers are happening, because they are going often from ed assistants into teaching positions, which I love, that they're advancing their careers. So, but offhand, we've had 19 teachers retire, 34 resignations, there were 28 transfers, and then we had a number of new additions to our staffing. The new additions that we added, some are grant-funded, but the goal of them really is to support the students with their social, emotional needs, as well as their academics for the students that may be behind this coming year. There are currently, I can say offhand, I actually wrote this down before, but roughly offhand, I wrote down, I'm not sure I did with piece paper, but roughly eight educational assistant positions are open. We are scrambling to get them hired. We are scrambling to get them hired. At this point, I am using temp agencies to see if we can hire some qualified candidates through the agencies. Last year, we did that because we had such a shortage in some of the ed assistants we hired from temp agencies. Some of the principals actually wanted to bring them back because they were really strong candidates. So we are looking at that. We have CNA positions that are being added to the school for the medical waiting rooms, for the COVID testing or the test and stay. So we continue to plug away at the staffing. But there is no doubt that we do have a gap of staff shortage right now. And just like Dr. Brand said, the same as any other district, ed assistants, there's not enough out there. So we're competing with every other district, some that are traveling far and some that are, you know, surrounding towns. And the same note, our teachers or ed assistants may be leaving us as well because they're having opportunities in different communities. So which is what we've seen in the last week with approximately half a dozen staff, you know, resigning from positions. So I don't know if anybody has any specific questions offhand, but it definitely has been quite a bit. And as you referenced, Dr. Brand, from last year, it, though it was hectic and overwhelming, I think this has been just nonstop. There was maybe a week and a half, I actually said to someone, it felt like it slowed down. And then right after that, it started picking up again. So we're, we're plugging away. Our goal would be to have as many positions filled or a few openings come next week. Some will be literally just being hired probably by Thursday or Friday, but we'll get them in, so.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments?
I'll just say, thank you for keep plugging away. I know it's tough.
It's a lot. It really is just looking at it like, wow, how do you, you know, keep moving? And then moving staff from place to place. I mean, today, for example, we had hired a math teacher for the high school who then was hired for a CTL position we had opened. So that moves somebody else. So it's a constant move. But internally, there have been some really positive moves, which I think is great, so.
Mrs. Plowman, and then Mr. Benoit.
Just an observation, and you may not be able to answer this, Andrea, but there also seems to be a large number of school psychologists with open positions. And, you know, obviously, that concerns me for the process of testing kids and evaluating kids in a timely manner while also maintaining three-year reevals and meetings with families and parents. And I don't know if Ms. Brown Legrand, you know, is concerned about that, should.
Very.
Yeah.
And, and, and there's a absolute, a dearth of candidates, none. So, yeah, it is, it is, there is absolutely concern. And she is working on trying to determine a plan to backfill and support that. But that, you know, that's a, that's an example in, in all of these. And I just, to expand upon that to say, you know, those positions have been posted. And Andrea has done an amazing job to push these through. And she touched upon this, as quickly as there and refreshes them, looking for alternatives like temp, temp agencies. That's an example of one that they're just, my understanding. And I don't know, maybe there's a candidate now who's applied. But I believe it was as of last week, I, I don't think there were any candidates.
We do, I will say, we did, he has not received his offer letter, but we did hire somebody or we offered someone a position. The position is being filled. So the paperwork was completed tonight, and so he will be sent the letter today. So we are filling the middle school position that we do have because of the, one of the positions was for the middle school. So, so we do have two openings. We had unfortunately, a school counselor resigned yesterday. So it's trying to move as long, you know, as quick as possible in finding the right people for these positions instead of just putting someone in. But it definitely is a concern. Alice Brown Legrand has been working adamantly and just kind of going through. And we've been talking about ideas of, you know, if we don't get them filled, how can we utilize other people to help to get that going? So.
Those positions, those like more clinical positions, school counselor positions, school psychology positions, would it be a consideration for the district to look at agencies to hire, like a per diem kind of scenario? If we were in the position where we might need to do something like that, to not get a serious backlog of services and testing?
Thank you. The, the final decision, I think, would be with Dr. Brand and Alice. But I think the reality is, yes, we have contracted them. We've been short, for example, with speech and language last year. We needed extras and we did. So I think we would utilize that, assuming that, again, Dr. Brand and others proved it. But it would be a good resource to, so we're not behind in the beginning, beginning of the school year.
Right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrea. Oh, sorry, Mr. Benoit.
Just quickly out of curiosity, I was wondering if any particular building was particularly hit hard or if it's kind of spread throughout the district?
I would say I can primarily the middle school. I think at the early childhood, we saw some transitions in some, tired as I'm watching like people transferring from one school to the next, it's like, oh, my gosh, you're just taking their people. But it, it's people that want to transfer. So at the early childhood, we had a number of people that transferred from one school to another. And the same thing from the intermediate, we had from the west, some of their people transferred into other positions. But right now, where we stand is the middle school has a larger number of openings. And some of that is because of newer positions that were added to help support the students. So we'll figure it out. We'll get through it, but it is going to be a rough one to start. So you know of anybody, please send them my way.
And I think, and not in any way to, to be doom and gloom, but this is again, just a, this is a, I think, just important, we thought for you as a committee to know in the community that it is in all likelihood the case that we will not be able to open fully staffed. And that's not normal at all. It's certainly not for the effort of trying to move things along as quickly as we can. There, there's, the questions I can understand would loom out there, well, why and why now? And I, you know, the fact that we have some staff who are pursuing jobs in other communities that might be closer to home, the fact that those positions are even open is highly unusual at this time of the year. The fact that people are tendering their resignation or choosing to retire at this point in the year is entirely uncommon. So i- is it all the nature of what we've been experiencing? You have to conclude to some degree, it must be. And, and obviously, circumstances arise for staff that has nothing to do with COVID. But I just, and, and so we are, and we will continue to try our very best. But unfortunately, it's quite likely that we will not have every single position filled with full time, especially to teachers today. And, and within this week, there's more than that, right? I think, certainly within the last week.
Yeah, definitely more than that. And then again, you know, the new positions added a little bit more, a few more openings. So I think the other thing too is that we also on top of that is we have leaves, some maternity leave so then to the school year and then going into the school year, we have leaves. So on top of what we do have for, you know, resignations, retirements, you're adding in those. And so we're also trying to fill tho- those positions. And so that adds into it. So we just, you know, continue. I'm trying to find more substitutes, so I'm interviewing to see if we can find more, whether they're per diem or just to fill in for a few weeks to get us going. So, so if you know anybody that wants to be a substitute, send them my way too. So, yeah.
I'm not sure if it's helpful, but someone's reaching out to the local universities can be helpful. I know, because some students who are still looking, so to reach out.
I am a member of Handshake, so I have posted, all red assistant positions have been posted at every single college in Massachusetts. I, I kind of just took a dive in that one and just figured, hey, you never know where someone's going to be. So, but I am continuing to. And so there's some other positions I'll be posting at the colleges, but thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, Mr. Exton.
Just add, I think, hopefully, an optimistic note that, I mean, last year, I, I remember that I was continually astonished that we were able to fill positions throughout the year, even with the kind of year that, that we were having. Sometimes it seemed like, just like, how are there still people out there who are, you know, want to, who are applying and who want to work in education and in the environment that, that was last school year? And, and I, you know, I, I believe that we'll get people, you know, as things are, things are, things are going to be better going forward. I think that there will be people that, that, you know, we'll be able to find.
I did too. And I think it's interesting is, is at the beginning of this week, I interviewed three potential substitutes, and they're all career changers. And that's a nice thing to see is that after last year, they're discovering that they may want to go into education after being home with their children and seeing it. So I think that also is a great option is, you know, if there are, that will be helpful. But I do, I do the same, have, you know, positive feeling and good faith that we will fill these positions. There'll be quite a bit of movement, but we'll get there.
Thank you very much, and thanks for being here tonight.
Enjoy your evening, please.
All right, item C.
In your packet is a memo that along a similar outline of staffing change. We, we unfortunately are preparing to say goodbye to Mr. In Crowe after many years of service in Wilmington. And she is pursuing another opportunity with another district. And we certainly, we certainly want to wish her the very best. I know that she has brought an awful lot in her tenure to this community, as I've come to learn. And, and I know that she will certainly be missed. The timing of her, of, of her announcement of, of resigning left us in a place in which it just wasn't, we felt practical ultimately to do a full-scale search. And so we're moving forward with an interim coordinator of health services for this coming school year. And as outlined in the memo, I'm pleased to be able to say that Rebecca Brown has agreed to move into that role. She has been very active with, with our leadership team, learning from Doreen, and they've been transition planning. So I'm confident we'll be, excuse me, in a great place for this. And, and we look forward to working with Ms. Brown, who's already hit the ground running for sure. And again, all the best wishes to Ms. Crowe as she moves on to the Arlington Public Schools. Item 5D, also in your packet, there is a memo that is an announcement. Really pleased and excited to be able to say that after a second try and effort with the SEEM Collaborative, we're pleased to be able to announce that Ms. Barrows, India Barrows, has been appointed as the, the first SEEM Education Collaborative Coordinator of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. A little bit of a biographical, biographical information on, on Ms. Barrows. As, as you know, this is an item that I brought before the committee some time ago for your support in, in participating in this. This is a position that is going to be shared, as you can see there, amongst six districts. One, Wilmington is one of them. This position is shared along with Melrose, Linfield, North Reading, Stonem and Woburn. And there is certainly a lot of excitement around working with Ms. Barrows and charting the course for what we believe that she can bring to our district and other districts. And I'll certainly keep you in tune as things evolve and have a chance to meet her as well too in the very near future. And that is, with one last exception, I'll just take this opportunity to share. There is, I just, I know that this has been posted in a couple of different locations, but there are two upcoming COVID vaccine clinics. These are free and they are being held on September the 21st from 5 until 8. And then on October the 12th from 5 until 8, both at the Wilmington Middle School. And with that, that's it for me tonight.
Thank you. All right. We'll move into old business. Oh, I'm sorry, sure, go ahead.
Just want to add one quick comment, which is just to publicly thank Doreen Crowe for just the tremendous work that she's done in our district, you know, over the, over many years, but especially in this past year and that the, you know, the load on her shoulders as the coordinator of health services was tremendous. And I'm very, very grateful that we had her to take us through, especially this past year, and wish her very well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Item 6B, we have the bullying prevention plan memo with the public comment revisions.
Sure. We'll speak to that this evening. So we, I, this is a follow-up item because during the month of July, we were, we took the current bullying prevention plan, put it out for public comment and feedback. We took the comments and made the revisions based on feedback we received. We received 11 comments from the community. And we looked at those, most of the comments that came through were related to more clerical types of changes and things. There wasn't a whole lot of substance, other than maybe changing some terminology and things like that. We took a draft of those comments and we made some revisions. We brought it before the Behavioral Health Task Force to get their input before we finalized it. I will say that in the comments, many of them were about not changes to the actual content of the plan. However, they were about how we were enforcing the different protocols that were in the plan. So we took a lot of that information, and even though it didn't actually change our bullying prevention plan, it's really informing our training that we do with our staff to make sure that we are implementing the plan as stated. So that was a part of our conversation today from some of our leadership meetings. And it will be a part of the mandated trainings that our staff will participate in at the opening launch of the school year. So that final version is now posted on the district's webpage, along with all of the other resources. And it is up to date and posted, and it'll continue to be a document that we review every two years and seek the community feedback on it as well.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Mrs. Plowman.
Just, just a comment, or I guess a thought to perhaps for us as a committee to think about or to talk with Dr. Brand about perhaps in a future meeting, around documentation of reports and really looking at our system as a district around documenting when someone, you know, reports bullying or other types of concerning conduct, whether from students or staff. And how are we tracking that as a district so that we can sort of have good systems in place for looking at repeat kinds of incidents or things like that? Because if there's turnover of staff, which we're hearing a lot about tonight, that there's a way to sort of look back and see. That's obviously a very broad issue for us to think about as a district. But I think it's something that can be really valuable for us to look at. Sort of how are we, is there like a central way and an electronic version ideally so that people can easily access information on these kinds of incidents?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Plowman. All right, that brings us to, oh, Mr. Smaha.
I just, I just want, so for, for the bullying prevention plan, you, would you, would you say it's, it's mostly clerical changes? There's no, there's no big shifts? So it's sort of, it's staying?
It's pretty much the same. We added the vision and the mission that were not included. We got updates from principals around any additional or different materials or programs or curriculum that they've added to their collection that they're using. So we updated those things. We changed some terminology around, you know, certain staff and included others that might not have been in there listed initially. But it's, they were not substantive changes. They were really more clerical and, and updates and some edits in that way.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Brings us to 7A staff opening day updates. Back to you, Mrs. Elliott.
So we are excited to launch the 21, 22 school year. And we will start with our staff back on Monday, the 30th. Dr. Brand will begin with a district-wide virtual meeting for all of our staff members to welcome everyone back and get us launched for the new school year. Principals will hold staff meetings that day and cover a wide variety of school-specific topics, as well as going through a lot of the annual mandated trainings that need to happen and covering health and safety protocols as we remember what it's like to come back and be in school. And staff will work to prepare learning spaces and, and prepare for the students to arrive on Wednesday, September 1st. On Tuesday, we will have a full staff professional development day. This was the day that has typically fallen in November. However, given the amount of requirements that we need to provide for PD and, and the amount of things we really needed to front-load, we have moved that day to the start of the school year for this school, for this year. And so during that day, we'll launch with a workshop that will be provided by And so during that day, we'll launch with a workshop that will be provided by Panorama Education. They'll provide an overview of SEL and our five core competencies. And they will also train our staff in how to use the new platform, the Panorama platform, to really access our own Wilmington data that was collected this past spring. And they will also train them in how to explore and use the playbook, which is the resource of lesson plans and activities that will help to address, educators can use with students to help provide intervention and support for students who may need it in a particular area. Following the workshop, staff will be provided time to implement, independently complete the Alice training. You may recall that our Alice training was done live in concert with the Wilmington Police Department, but that has changed and it is an online module for the actual education part of the training this year. We will still partner with them for live drills. But staff will all complete that online independently on this particular day. And we have also implemented frontline professional growth, which is our professional development tracking system. So there'll be an opportunity for staff to learn about that particular tool. There will be staff meetings in the afternoon and covering a variety of topics, but with a strong emphasis on covering topics related to universal screening and intervention and really focusing on learning recovery for our students for the upcoming school year. And I did include the link to the agenda so that you can take a peek, if you'd like to, to see the details of each of those things. And honestly, as well, the, if any of the committee members would like to join in our panorama session, you're more than welcome to join that link to learn a little bit more about it if you'd like, so.
Just if I could just add, back to Alice for a moment in the program. It is our intention to hold a community meeting at some point, well, we do have a date, I just forgot.
We haven't set the date. We have a rough month, October.
But I think broadly speaking, we've come to recognize that this is not a new program to Wilmington, but it's not necessarily had a refresher or an update. And so that's the lens through which we're looking at this for both our staff. And obviously, we've got many new staff over the last few years, but also for community members. And so we will, we will plan that in the not-too-distant future.
Questions or comments? Mr. Smaha.
I was just, I was looking through the time. I know that when we were looking at the calendar for the school year, we were looking at one of the reasons for having some of the full-day PDs rather having it be more, having more days in the beginning of the year was the, was for IEP 504 reviews. And I mean, I see time during the first day for the liaisons and then time during, on the second day, at the end of the day for those liaisons to probably update the teacher, other teachers or service providers or whoever happens to be. Is that, is that enough, you feel that's enough time and the teachers for the most part are?
Yeah, so that is typically been how, you know, it was done on an early release day in the past. And we don't, you know, so it wasn't a full day to do that. So we feel that this will be sufficient time for people to have access to it. Each school has it set up in a different way where teachers come in at different times or, I mean, we have this time, but there's also other times and opportunities during, when they have planning time to review things as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Smaha. Actually, a similar question, just not seeing classroom teachers on here. So that would be during the 145 to, I'm sorry, on day two, where it says liaisons and principals? That would be the chance for the classroom teachers to meet with?
Oh, so they are facilitating it, but the classroom teachers, they facilitate that process.
With the classroom teachers?
Yes.
Okay.
So they'll, the liaisons will prepare the documents for the teachers and then they will oversee with principals that process for all staff who need to have access to those documents to help them.
Okay, thank you. And I would, I would be interested in knowing if that is enough time. I am curious to see if that is, if the teachers feel sufficiently prepared after that.
We would love another full day.
I know.
Or some early release to do that would be great too.
I'm also very happy to see the dyslexia update here at the staff meeting on, I think that's on day two.
Substantial amount of time to cover that, spend on that.
Mr. Exter.
Also, I want to point out and I guess call out the provision of time for classroom and office setup. There's obviously never enough time for everything, but I'm happy to see it acknowledged that, you know, that this is time that teachers are going to have to spend getting their classrooms ready for our students and that there's some provision on these official, you know, first two days of school to try and set some time aside for them to do that.
Even more important, I think, this year, given the amount of changes to classroom structures last year and furniture that all was moved out, and so I think people are, you know, will, many of them are working hard all summer trying to, when they can get into the building to get those rooms set up, so I agree.
Other questions? Mr. Smaha.
Our teachers, when can teachers, are they able to come into classrooms yet?
Most are, yeah, I think Woburn Street with the building project that was going on, the construction was the latest, but most have been available in classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item eight, we have other reports. Are there any subcommittee reports? Item nine, correspondence. Item 10, future school committee dates and other notable items. September 1st is the first day of school, grades one through 12. September 7th, first day of school, pre-K and kindergarten. September 8th will be our next regular session meeting here in this room at 7:00 PM. And then our second meeting of September will be September 22nd, also here in this room. And we do want to take this opportunity to wish all of our Wilmington Public School students, teachers, staff and faculty a wonderful first day of school and we're excited to get started again.
School will be started the next time.
Next time we're in here, it will be after the first day, so. Any other comments before we look for a motion to adjourn?
Just a quick question regarding some of these sort of last, final opening kinds of updates. Dr. Brand, you will share that with us?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible before the opening day.
Most certainly.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Smaha, is there a second? Mrs. Newhouse, in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you and good night.